That was pretty cool.
One is a big...
Yeah, there's might be others. That was one out of two.
Fifty percent?
Yeah. We did a good job.
The area is showing well too. Drive in. Very green.
It's perfect right now.
That always looks like this.
Where did those dust storms happen?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
That's somewhere else.
Ancient memories.
It's in New York.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's in the past. Don't worry.
How easily we forget? Whoa, was that?
It is in October.
I reserve this to Derek to come up and sing us a song.
It is one o'clock. Time for our regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, is there a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, today it is my turn for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we pray for your guidance and wisdom during today's meeting. Help us each contribute in meaningful discussions that allow us to do your will. Thank you for all the rain that you've brought to us, you with our first responders to keep them safe and ensure that all make it home safely, and continue to remind us that all we do here today and that all we accomplish is for you. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Next up is public comment. This is a time for anybody to come up and speak about any of the top or any topic that is not on the agenda. If you do come up, please state your name. All right. All right, there's nobody coming up. That's all right.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention that there were a few changes on the minutes that I noticed if we want to go back.
Yeah, I just jumped right over that. Sorry about that. Yes, the minutes.
There was just some verbiage that needed to be added on one of the items and then just one of the items, it had an incorrect wording in one of the items, but I think it's been corrected. Correct? Correct. Okay.
Okay, any other corrections? All right, then the minutes stand approved as corrected.
Okay.
Still no public comment.
Item 7A under report of the city manager. Congratulations to Public Works and Utilities Director Mike Muirhead on the occasion of being named the recipient of the 2023 Mark Chris Hawn Leadership and Managerial Excellence Award by the American Public Power Association. This award recognizes public power, utility, and association managers who bring their organizations to new levels of excellence, lead by example, and inspire their employees and staff to improve processes, services, and operations. So congratulations to Mike, and the award is well deserved, and we're proud of you.
Yes, congratulations.
There is tentatively an event planned for July 18th. There would be a lunch in advance of the city commission meeting where folks from Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, Mike's colleagues from around the state, family and friends, and of course, city of Garden City staff and elected officials and community members could show up and celebrate this award with Mike. He'll be receiving the award in Seattle next week, next Tuesday, I think. All right, we're ready for item B, and this is Water Resource Manager Fred Jones is going to present a mid-year update on water consumption.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. All right, well, it's a little bit nicer this year. Unfortunately, you know, the results of that, we can't really measure those yet, so maybe later in the year we'll have an update for you and hopefully continue to have some time and moisture. Just wanted to go over to some kind of high level, water use issues typically at this meeting. We also talked about our drought response plan. I had sent that off to some folks with the state that also review our plan, and I have not heard back from the time to get an update to you for this meeting, but we'll present that in the future. Generally, water consumption increased significantly in last year, about 6.5% more water was used last year than our five-year average. Water consumption continues to trend upward. We're averaging about 1% per year in the range, and consumption totals differs by approximately 89 million gallons over the past six years. So it's going up, but it's not dramatic. And we'll go into some of the reasoning, some of the detailed information behind that. In previous updates to commission, we've noted a slow continuous consumption growth during the non-irrigation months. However, you know, really that's, it's hard to say that that's been increasing. We actually are seeing about a 1% per year decline over the past six years on our non- irrigation watering months. We are averaging about 135 million gallons per year from 2016 to 2021. Last year, our non-irrigation watering use actually increased by about 1%. Average use during the 2022 irrigation season increased by 9% over the prior year. So one thing I want to say in regard to that, something that we need to look a little more closely into is irrigation tends to get the brunt of the use. There are other uses of water that do increase in the summertime that probably are getting to a point in terms of the industrial capacity in Garden City that we need to take a look at, and that's water required for cooling. And so we're going to try and do some analysis of that, especially after this year, and try and see if we can paint a little better picture of kind of what our cooling footprint is. That could be any large businesses, our hospital has cooling towers, the meteorologist cooling towers. And so we may be looking in some ways we can work with some of those entities just to provide them some more information, education, to help them conserve some water and hopefully save their businesses some money as well. Customer water consumption, just kind of looking at our residential consumption, overall consumption for residences has increased by about 3% annually. However, if you look at that consumption per meter, there's actually been about a 0.2% decline annually for residential water consumption. The average residential water meter count has risen by 258 meters, or about 3.3% since 2016. So we have a 3.35% increase in meters, about a 3% increase in the water consumption. And that orange line on the chart just kind of shows that continued growth in meters. And we'll have another similar year this year where we have a number of meters that are on the docket to be installed. More noticeably, growth in commercial and industrial water consumption over the past years, five years, commercial and industrial use has increased by an average of 2% annually. The average commercial or industrial meter count has risen by 49 meters, which accounts to about 5% of our commercial meter population. That's all since 2016. So again, the dotted line on your report kind of shows the general trend on consumption, and then the orange line just is showing our average commercial meter count that increases through the years. Non-revenue water, there is, you know, some, I don't think any of these numbers are bad in terms of we are using more water, but if we look at the growth we're having, it's not a one-for-one increase. But in non-revenue water, we've seen some pretty positive reductions. Big Cool obviously played a huge role in that, but also some of the controllers that I got, especially our parks department is using, has really helped impact non-revenue water. So data in the chart reflects the current parks and recreation structure plus tangent and conflicts. Water consumption in 2022 was 22% less than it was in 2016. Over the past years, six years, the average decrease in water use has been 6% per year, obviously last year, and we'll talk about a little bit of that later. Reducing non-revenue water consumption, obviously it saves us water resources for the community to use for other things, but it also saves our customers' costs down the road as well because all of our ratepayers contributing towards those non-revenue uses of water. So for 2022, just kind of looking at the, my famous scribble chart, which I hope is somewhat helpful. I don't really have a lot to report as far as what our trend is for this year. It's kind of up in the air. We're kind of in the middle of the pack. Obviously, our main usage is promising this first week or two of June with the temperatures and the rainfall. Hopefully, we will see a more, a kinder June than what we've had in the past. So we'll continue to monitor this and keep the commission updated. For the current month, city wells produced 93.4 million gallons of water as of June. Oh, my dates are wrong. But our five-year average, so our production average, monthly production is lower. We're ranging from 82.8 to 144 million gallons produced. Also wanted to visit a little bit about the WaterSense Irrigation Controller rebate. We have been measuring that project. Last year, the measurements on participating meters in that project changed significantly. We believe that this is probably just due to a lack of moisture. So the design of those controllers is to reduce water usage that would otherwise be happening when you get a rain event or a thunder event. Last year, we didn't have those. And so those controllers, basically what I'm seeing is essentially operated like any other controller. So it's an important lesson, I guess, for us to learn in terms of that as a water-saving strategy. While it has value during years where we have some kind of predictable moisture and the value, the savings in most years have been about 20%. If we have years where we have no moisture, the savings just doesn't exist because they're not adjusted. So something that we'll look at this year, I think having some data this year to kind of compare and contrast with what the last few years have been doing, especially 2016, will be all of those. And again, we'll continue to provide updates to you on that project. Any other questions from the governing body?
So the rebate is still available to people in the community? How would they find out or get that information?
Yeah, the rebate is listed on our city website, Watersense Controller Rebate. We also periodically put that on social media to promote that. And again, if you know anyone that has an interest for redesigning their sprinkler system, you can always feel free to point them our direction at the water utility, and I'll be happy to give them all the information they need to apply. We rebate up to $150 for the actual cost of the controller, and so we're happy to do that. We have had a good spring, actually. We've gotten a number of applications in the spring, but we still have plenty of funds authorized in that line item for this year's utility grants.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Item C through E are staff reports. If the commission has any questions on any of those, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Not hearing any. Call your attention to meetings of note. If anything requires an RSVP, and the only thing I think that would would be the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. Get coordinate those through C L N, please. Item 9A, appropriation ordinance number 2580-2023A, if you approve it.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2580-2023A.
Second. Go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
New business item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A. Alicia.
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to review and consider a First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A, Rural Housing and Sinister District. Developer Sunset Terrace Estates is expected to amend the approved eligible cost amount in the Development Agreement for Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A. The eligible cost list was, excuse me, expected expenditures for the installation of public infrastructure through the RHND program. Sunset Terrace Estates LLC is eligible to be reimbursed for the cost listed. Sunset Terrace Estates LLC is requesting to amend the expenditure amounts for the following items: site preparation, sanitary sewer, roadway, urban gutter, and water system. During the bidding process, the developer received bids over the initial estimates. The existing total eligible costs are $3,819,508.99. Sunset Terrace Estates LLC is requesting to raise the total eligible cost to $511,724.99. This is an increase of $692,216. The increase gives the developer the ability to be reimbursed for these additional incremental costs. However, reimbursement is not guaranteed and is dependent upon the property tax revenues generated from the district. A section regarding water infrastructure is proposed to correct a clerical error, and other sections and exhibits of the Development Agreement are also proposed to be amended. These amendments simply update those sections and exhibits to reflect the most current provisions and forms used by Neighborhood and Development Services for Rural Housing and Sinister District projects. Your alternatives are: the governing body may approve the First Amendment to Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A Development Agreement as proposed; the governing body may approve the First Amendment to Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A Development Agreement with changes; or three, the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. Staff would recommend approval of the amendment as proposed.
Are there any questions?
I make a motion. We approve the First Amendment to the Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A Development Agreement as it had been presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a recommendation to modify the final design of the mural located at Garden City Municipal Court. Cynthia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a recommendation to modify the final design of the mural located at Garden City Municipal Court. The original design was approved in October of 2021. The artist, Michael Hudson, began working on the mural in the summer of 2022. Due to illness and cold weather, he was unable to finish the mural, so he was planning on finishing it in the summer of 2023. But since then, he has received feedback from members of the public stating that they felt that the mural would be best without the children that were in the original design. So place of adding the children, Mr. Hudson is planning on adding more butterflies and additional details to sunflowers and the clouds. He is asking the city commissioner to consider updating the design, keep the mural as it is currently drawn with additional details noted. The alternatives would be for the governing body to approve moving forward the original design, which includes drawings of the children, or for the governing body to approve moving forward with finishing touches as currently drawn. Staff has no recommendation, and there's no additional costs or is open for many changes in the design. The artist is also here to provide any additional details, and then is there any questions he could add?
So yeah, if he could come forward and kind of give us an idea of what kind of, what your concept is.
So originally, we had a design that had multiple children here, frolicking with butterflies, is how I put it, and those are going to be kind of the last icing on the cake as you go. As the timing has gone on, it's proved to be a little bit more of a difficult surface to paint on, and then other things have come up. It took a little longer than originally anticipated. Rome wasn't built in a day, and artists almost objective, so it's a little bit, I don't know if I'll ever think that it's officially done, probably by our own artistic. So with the updated design, the concept, I've heard a lot of different things, as you said up there, people come by and ask you many different things about it. And so originally with the children, I've had people thought it would be a wonderful idea, it'd be beautiful. I did a live model search at Garden City Sidewalk Chalk Competition in 2020. I've resulted in many good images and resources of models for the mural, and it'd be a shame to have not used them. However, I've had other people have brought up, I would ruin my selfie station. How am I going to take a photo of a sunflower if there's a 20-foot child up there? What about you, going to get a butterfly or dealing with that? And so you have mixed emotions from the citizens of the community about what should be in there, and I've heard kind of leaning one way or the other way. For me, as an artist, it doesn't necessarily, I think there's pros and cons of both of them. I think that it could be replaced with additional flowers and things of that nature, or we could go ahead and add the children inside of there, and it just kind of depends. So I'm looking for additional feedback, and maybe you guys had some thoughts or ideas, because I guess you can't make everybody happy.
So the additional elements that you would add would be on that left side over there?
So originally, there would have been a larger one or two children here, and another one small back from there.
So you'll just add, so with your, what you're thinking your updates would be then is adding more butterflies in those areas where the kids would have, the children would have been, or?
As I'm working still, I'm working on another sunflower right here, so this will become a tower. And so if I didn't, I would probably add more smaller butterflies at different angles, and then come back up with a larger flower right here.
Okay.
Grouping the flowers.
Right.
Well, I like, I mean, your original design was amazing, so I mean, that's, and I mean, I think this design also, I just, I mean, I know it's been really something people have really enjoyed, but I, I mean, I don't see leaving the children out would be bad, but...
No, I've actually, I've had feedback, exactly what you just said, too, of both ways, but I think adding the element of the flowers, I like that idea, and I think that the community would also like it. It's very popular. People are using it all the time, and that's really its intended purpose. And so I think, you know, the addition of, you know, any more areas that they could use would be perfect.
Yeah, my only concern about adding the children in is I think it would change the nature of what has been there for a year. So I think, even though, when people don't know that, it's always been in there, so they would say, what's going on? We, it was good already, why are we adding different things? So that's kind of been the thing where, I mean, if you just finish, I mean, like the mayor said, I mean, people are super stoked about it already and happy with the way it looks, so I think just finishing up a couple of those spots would be good, and then we'll get the children in the next one from you.
Well, I do appreciate you saying that, you know, this mural could never be finished. I mean, it is something that's living and breathing, and I think that's really something that's really kind of exciting, but...
As an artist, I really want to also thank the governing body just for the opportunity to do something like this in your community. It's working on, I've realized, how difficult and how long. You don't get too many opportunities like this in your lifetime, and all that I get, taking on something like this might not be as, you know, nothing to think about a little bit harder.
Well, and you're on public display while you're painting.
Would you, I think, I kind of like the caterpillars and stuff. I think, would you add another caterpillar over there where you're going to do the flower?
It could be awesome, about 80 bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Asked about, and you get a lot of people come and ask, oh, you can do this for that, or I'd love to see this, and some of them are great, and some of them, yeah.
Sure.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve moving forward with the finishing touches as currently drawn, but adding, enhancing the mural with your finishing touches.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for all your work.
All right, thank you, and I hope to be back for a final approval before the third focus on probably in August.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.
Item 12C, the Finance Director Jared Coleman will review the General Fund and provide information on potential bond issuance projects.
Usually you need a break before me, but you know.
This is pretty thick. I still might need a break.
So I'll preface, I've got an item with some information that I think we'll hit at the end, but we'll start by going through the budgets. You've got kind of two sections to the packet today. You've got the actual budget sheets themselves, and then we have the supporting documentation. Some of the items I'll reference as we go through are indicated in that supporting documentation, and then I'll try to highlight kind of those main shifts, main indicators. Starting off, if you look at the admin revenue, we have the ad valorem tax amount. I'll just kind of throw in a feel or a reminder again that this is based off a 3% increase estimate. This isn't a final number yet from the county. We'll probably get that this month, the next couple of weeks, and then we'll go back and plug in kind of what that initial estimate is and get a little more clarification on this. But the motor vehicle taxes, the commercial vehicle tax, those are the numbers we have actually received thus far, so those are updated and real from the estimate from the county treasurer. I'll point out city sales tax and county sales tax, we have estimated, we've increased them above what the original 23 budget was, and that's based off of the 2022 actuals being higher, and this year trend we're seeing is pretty close to 22 numbers. We're up slightly, but not quite the same uptick we've seen over the last few years, but we still feel confident in the number we have budgeted here due to the number that was accrued in 2022. I'll also point out kind of another uptick is the gas utility franchise. This year, we are seeing higher collections from the gas, the Black Hills franchise amount, and so that 850 is an increase from the 525 originally budgeted, but that's based off the current trend. Now, we received most of that franchises in the first half of the year, so we feel pretty confident that that number will be attainable.
Okay.
Going to the next page, you'll see that building permits has increased slightly. This is a variable number depending on the developments and things going on, so it's kind of a hard one to peg, but our year-to-date collections indicate that we're slightly above where we had originally projected. Interest income is a large spike. The last few years, we've seen really minimal interest income amounts with really, really low interest rates, but that has drastically changed the last couple of years. And so you'll see we went from 150,000 as an estimated revenue to 1.2 million for this year. We feel pretty confident in that 1.2. We actually think it'll be a little higher than that, but we're being conservative and making sure we keep a buffer, and then keeping a million for next year, anticipating that these interest rates are likely sticking around for a little while, and maybe some shift and change, a little bit decrease, but we don't expect it to drop as drastically as what we had in the past. I'll also just like to point out on utility fund reimbursements, you'll see that those, that is a zero amount for '23 and '24. We've broken that into two different codes to kind of quantify and clarify what's coming. There's an administrative overhead amount that comes from the utilities as well as their franchise amount, and the 5% utility franchise is that 2.743 for '24 and 2.515. And then the administrative overhead uses a mechanism to account for a portion of the general fund expenses that would be servicing a utility, and that's what those other ones... So rather than have it all lumped into one, we've broken that into the two to kind of paint that picture a little bit clearer going forward. We also have 100,000 in '23 as the transfer other funds is the ending amount of the Recreation Fund that came to the General Fund at the end of 2022, when the rec fund no longer existed and they were absorbing the General Fund. And then that last transfer, 0.30 sales tax, just as a reminder, is the amount that covers the operational costs for the preparation for the third fire station. And so as we add new staff for the fire station, as they buy equipment and uniforms, that's what that amount is covering and amounts to. Any questions on any of the general fund revenues? All right, next is the admin commission. This is the budget for the commission. Really nothing major changing here. This is very much consistent year over year, and the numbers represented are pretty much on par with what's historically been included. Next is admin city manager. I'll point out that there's a couple upticks in '24, maintenance contracts upticks to 45,000. That's for the Pacer AI software that we're looking at getting. That's for the Pacer AI software that we're looking at getting. So that's one change there. And then if you go down to the new equipment software in 23, that 26,000 is an uptick from trend of the past. That's for looking at new software for the agenda, for the commission agenda, to replace, potentially replace Novus or look at potentially finding another solution there. Next is service and finance. This again is pretty on trend with normal. No major indicators to communicate with you today, but I wanted to point out that the new Tyler Technologies software and diversified utility building software, those are in process of being implemented. And the original amount held in the CIP fund is to cover the first three years. And so in 25 will be the first time we start seeing those ongoing annual costs in probably a few different departments, but service and finance will be one that would be represented. So that's coming in the future, but still kind of paid for and taken care of through 24.
So with that, and are the maintenance or license?
It'll be maintenance contracts.
Okay.
And it'll, like I said, since it's software that's financial, but it really impacts all departments, it's HR, it's financial. We'll probably split that cost across multiple departments, but it'll be in the maintenance contract line going forward. Next is admin legal services. Again, this one, really not a lot of change. We've kept the budget this year for 23 as well as 24, and this pays for our legal services, including our city attorney as well as our legal counsel for our bond counsel and other, any sort of legal costs that we have. Next is municipal court. I'll point out, they've had a couple of changes, and Cynthia, there's a memo in the supporting documentation to speak to some of this. One shift is their contracted services for the judge, which was a staffed position, is now a contracted position. So you'll see that 101,400 broken out for 23 and 24 to account for that. Their salary line decreased a portion as well as their benefits to account for no longer having that staffed position. But then they also added a part-time translation clerk. For their maintenance contacts, contracts, you'll see in 2024, they're anticipating starting with a new software as well. And so that 270,000 includes a portion of the kickoff costs for that software. So that's why you see kind of a major uptick there. And then you'll have, you have a few new lines. You have janitorial service, repair buildings, utilities, gas. These were all previously included in the police department budget under utilities municipal court, but we felt that shifting them to the municipal court, where that's in that new building, is more accurate to cut track and convey where that cost lies. So those are all new, but there's an associated decrease in cost in the police department to account for adding these lines. And then you'll see their legal court appointed is upticking in 23 and 24. They've had some struggles to continue to maintain legal court appointed interest in attorneys in the community due to our cost for those cases. And so they're looking and reviewing, potentially increasing that amount per case to attract maintaining a good amount or an adequate amount of legal counsel there for our court appointed cases. Next is human resources. They have a couple shifts here in salaries. You'll see in 2024, they go up a little bit. This is to add another position for human resources, for another generalist position. And then their maintenance contracts, they actually decrease in 24. One of the elements that the new software with Tyler is looking to replace is NeoGov that we currently use. We use them for onboarding and hiring and training. And we're looking to get, probably replace some of those components with Tyler components that we're already going to have in the new module. So the dust will have to settle a little bit on that, but we anticipate that that will be a decrease as we go away from some of those services through HR. Next is information technology. I will note that this year, in the past, we've always had IT and communications in one budget. And this year, we've broken them out to IT and communications separately. And so this is just the IT side of that department. You'll see that in their supporting documentation, they have a breakout that covers their maintenance contracts and their subscriptions and kind of details those broken out. So that number for 23 and 24, you can see as well as the communications listed on the same supporting documentation. And so those kind of the high numbers, they have a lot of different subscriptions for different softwares and things that they handle for the majority of the city. The new equipment office in 2024 has quite an uptick, and I'll highlight that that is, 562,000 of that is for network refresh, which is replacing a lot of our network servers. And Clay could speak to that if you have any questions. But really, it's kind of a overhaul of the, all of the hardware that we have. And it'd have to be kind of a one-time jump in and do it. We can't really phase it out just because of the way that the, our current contracts and things work. So it's a big chunk, but then we could, in the future, phase those replacements and make it a little bit more manageable going forward. It also includes a shift.
And that was, that was, my question is if it's going to be phased in the future, if it's always going to be a once every 10-year jump?
In shifting away from what we've currently had, we can build that into now, maintain it at a little more of an interval pace rather than just at one time every once in a while. And so that's one of the goals of the overhaul, is getting to where we can do that. Along with that, you'll see that there's 88,000 set aside in that 662,000 for general fund department computers. Over the years, the departments themselves have included all of their different computers and monitors and things in their department budgets, but to make things simpler for IT to manage that, since they're the ones who already have the track of, here's who needs replaced, here's when they need replaced, rather than have them send that out, and departments have to put that into the system or into their budgets, IT is just going to take care of that going forward and put one lump sum into their budget to take care of everybody else. It works for general fund, it won't work for our enterprise fund since they're paid for separately, but it should simplify life a little bit for all of these general fund departments. Any other questions on IT? All right, next is legal services for the city prosecution. This is a contract amount, it's been the same for a few years. We anticipate no change in this, so the budget remains 200,000 for 24 and 23. Next is communications. Again, this is the first time they've been broken out, so their historical numbers here are the same totals as the IT historicals. They just kept them lumped because I didn't want to go try to paint a weird picture of breaking those and trying to disseminate that. So it looks like quite a steep drop-off when you compare apples to apples here, but it's the combination of those two budgets together. But again, their maintenance contracts and their subscriptions are on their supporting documentation. And I'll just kind of point to the new equipment software for 45,000. This is set aside for researching and potentially implementing a new website. It's one of the goals of the communications department. And so that may get pushed to 23 just due to some staffing turnover and some other things that are on their plate. But that would be something we could hold at the end of the year and put in Fund 5 to be able to utilize next year if it doesn't happen this year.
Jared, what's the big drop-off in the 5531, the subscriptions?
So that's because the 23 budget is IT and communications number?
An IT subscription, that was buried in that.
Correct, so if you go back to ITs, the 9200 for communications plus the 114 for IT would be close to that 129 amount. So yeah, not, not a perfect picture here, but I didn't really know what was the best way to present that. And I felt like me guessing would be probably worse than this. Next is neighborhood and development. Pretty similar, the first few lines here. I'll point out engineering fees are decreased in 23 and 24. This is the amount that we hold for Wilson and Company contract for kind of the miscellaneous engineering fees. A lot of our work with them the last few years has incorporated a lot of projects, and so those costs for the Wilson Engineering gets put into the project costs. And so this whole amount here in neighborhood development hasn't been utilized as much. And that seems to be kind of the trend we've been experiencing, and we expect that to continue. A lot of that work is tied to a project. And so we're diminishing the amount we're holding in DS budget because it's going to be captured in those project costs. They also have some uptick in training and education and travel, just to make sure their staff is, be able to receive the certifications and training that they need. And then for new equipment office, you'll see the 22,000 in 23 is an uptick for, they had a, one of their scanners broke, and so it's a replacement of that equipment that they need. And then their new equipment vehicles to replace one of their vehicles in 2023. And I believe that's what had been purchased and done as well. Any questions on neighborhood and development? Next, we shift to police, and I would point out that police has a lot of different pages of their supporting documentation. They are very specific in highlighting a lot of their large kind of big-ticket items. They break them out, so I'll refer back to that a little bit as we go. But to start off, the revenues here, with the way the new software breaks it out, if there's specific revenues that are tied to a department, it actually puts them with that department. In the past, our general fund has all had all revenues as one section at the very front. And so you'll see that we'll have revenues for police, for fire, for parks, for zoo. There's not much in some of them, but recreation kind of has quite a chunk to itself. So some of those are going to be a little misleading when you look for that total revenue on the front page. It's kind of dispersed throughout. So here are the police revenues. These are revenues tied specifically to the police department. No change over past years or the 23 original budget, pretty much staying on track. Next is police administrative. You'll see that their maintenance contract is a large number, the 330 in 2023 and 344 in 2024. And that is broken out in the first page, the second page of their documentation that has a little bit of color on it. They do a good job of breaking out every contract and letting you know what it's for and what exactly it is. They also have this reimbursed community trust. This is the repayment for the amount that was for the remodel of the Telegram building. And 2023, this is payment number three of nine, and 24 will be payment four of nine. So almost halfway paid back on that as of next year. For the repair buildings, it's an uptick over what the original budget was. That's for LEC remodel costs that we're holding on to for finding solutions for the police department to make sure that they can adequately use the space that they're in. And then you'll see 5588 is utilities municipal court. That went from 95,000 down to zero. That's the amount that was shifted to the municipal court budget to account for the janitorial and the other services. On the second page for them, you'll have the new equipment vehicle line is pretty high, as well as their new equipment other. Those are also broken out on their supplemental information. But I'll point out that the 2023 revised number for the 588-800 includes 300,000 for the mobile command unit that we're looking at, as well as 300,000 for the new software for CAD RMS replacement that they have been investigating and working towards incorporating as well. And then moving forward in 2024, that CAD RMS 300,000 is going to stick around to continue to pay for that service. They also have 190,000 set aside for radio upgrades for next year. And if you have any specific questions on any of that equipment, I'm sure Chief could speak to it better than I can. No?
Okay.
Police investigations, pretty much staying on par with what has been and what was budgeted originally in 2023. Slight variations in some of the benefit amounts, but other than that, fairly consistent. Same applies to police patrol. Their gas oil diesel upticked a little just because we've experienced higher costs this year in that, and they have to drive a lot of cars. But other than that, their budget is fairly similar as well. Same for police support services. Not a lot of other costs other than the salary and benefits portion for the support services. And so that's primarily what this entire budget consists of. For their animal control, you'll see that the Humane Society amount, 310,000 this year and next year, that upticked from previous, but that was part of the renegotiated contract with them that we discussed and had processed last year. And so that'll be the 310 going forward. And then there's also that 20,000 set aside for building repair, or for miscellaneous repairs that might come up at the Humane Society building that we're responsible for. And then the next section is new to the police department. This is for the indoor gun range. Rather than incorporate it into administrative, we wanted to break it out and be able to track these costs. I will point out that the salary line here is really just for the range safety officers that are out there. They're being paid as a part-time employees. A lot of the other staffing is either through police officers that are being paid through the police department budget already, or for some of our clerical out there, it's records clerks or clerks from service and finance or from the municipal court that are going and filling that capacity out there. So their, their costs are incorporated into their department budget. And so that doesn't quite paint the full picture of the staffing costs. But due to the way our payroll processes, there's not really a better way to break that out and show that. So they have some set aside for building repairs or equipment, things that'll go, that they need to replace, the filters and consumables and things like that for the gun range. Any questions on police? All right, moving on to fire. You'll see at the very top, there's one line for the fire revenue. So as I said, they're kind of dispersed throughout. That's for the rural fire contracts amount. For fire administrative, they have their maintenance contracts and their repair buildings line are part of their supporting documentation. Part of the repair building for the 2024 increase are for furnaces and a new condenser for both stations. And so that's just maintaining some of that HVAC that they need to keep up to date. So that's where that uptick comes from. And then their maintenance contracts are also broken out on their supporting documentation to show, similar to PD, kind of all the different software and systems that they have in place. For fire operations, you'll see their repair vehicle line. Historically, back in '21, it's 50,000. When Chief Fricke took over, there was some vehicles had been, that needed a little bit of attention and some TLC. And so we've had Conrad Fire Equipment, having a contract with them to come out and service those trucks. And then there's the other repairs that we take care of, as well as tires and things for all the equipment. It's kind of why that has upticked over the last couple of years, but we anticipate that's likely going to stay close to that number. Maybe after a few years of really good attention, they can decrease slightly. But that's an ongoing service just to make sure we get the full life out of our equipment and put that cost in along the way rather than having to replace it years sooner than otherwise. I'll also point out that there's an uptick in the training, education, and travel expense. We actually, the reverse of what we've done the other departments was breaking them out. The ARF station department, we decided to consolidate into the operations department for fire because there just wasn't a lot extra in that department. And so this training, education, and travel uptick is just the absorption of those costs from the ARF section of the fire department. And so it's not necessarily an increase, it's just a reallocation within the budget. For new equipment vehicle, you'll see that in 23, that 549, 550, that includes 250,000 for the mobile command unit. So just speaking of that real quick, the idea is that the police department will pay a chunk, the fire department will pay a chunk. We have $500,000 of federal money for that. And then the E911 is, that can actually set aside 250,000 for the equipment. And so these four different mechanisms of payment coming together are how we're planning to pay for that vehicle. So it's a little bit here, a little bit there, kind of throughout. And so that 250 is the fire's allocation for that.
Jared, it's already been purchased, or it's going to be purchased?
We're looking, we're shopping around right now, but it's in the budget as an intended purchase at this point. But that's an item that I'll present in my notes later that's.
And you already have the 500,000, or that, you don't get that until after it's been purchased?
I don't.
For the federal dollars?
Correct, yeah, so they will, they'll provide that to us when we purchase the equipment. Also here, the new equipment other, you can see that some of their equipment they get throughout the year is broken out in their supporting documentation, but that goes anywhere from radios and wildland tools equipment. And so their breakout here covers that 180,000 and the 198.5 for next year. So the next two, fire volunteers and fire ARF station, you'll see that those budget amounts were both absorbed into that fire operations budget. And so rather than have them broken out going forward, they'll be, they will cease to exist. Any questions on fire? Okay, moving on to parks. There are some various parks revenues, such, parks or cemetery revenues are included under parks. So cemetery revenues, I'm on you setting some miscellaneous. Going down, you'll see there is an increase in the repair buildings line by about 20,000. This is for repairing the roof at the rec center. They had quite a bit of leaking in the rain we've had this year, and so they're working to get that resolved and fix that. And so that's an adjustment to cover that cost. And then if, going forward, down to their new equipment parks and new equipment other, you'll see decreases in both of these. They'd been setting aside some funding in the Fund 5 the last couple of years for dump trucks and a vehicle they were trying to acquire that they couldn't get due to supply chain. I believe on the, on the duck today is the dump truck for parks, and that will be paid for with those Fund 5 dollars that have been held over. And so we've decreased the parks budget specifically for that, since it's coming from that holdover amount. And then as well as the pickup that they purchased earlier this year, that's also coming from their Fund 5. And so it's a slight drop in their ongoing kind of regular costs because those have been held over for a few years, but we'll probably see that tick back up back in 25 when they need another vehicle or equipment identified. Next is cemetery. Not a lot has changed in the cemetery, pretty steady with what has been historically there. Other than their new equipment other, they are looking to, they're upticking a little. They're looking to purchase a bobcat with some different various attachments that will help with their grave digging and different things they do specifically for cemetery. And they also need to replace their current water cannon that they have. And so that's the 75,000 for 23. And then in 24, they're looking to also replace and get a new dump truck. And so that's the 75,000 for next year is to replace that dump truck. Questions on parks or cemetery? I'm sure all the department heads out there are really disappointed that they're not getting to come up and answer.
They keep coming in.
The cemetery improvements, the drop-off in 23, 24 was?
So the cemetery improvements, we've been setting aside funds for the singing tower, as well as kind of prepping some funds for others, potentially the expansion. One of the items that we'll discuss when we get to the actual language written in the Novus item is the cemetery expansion. And that's kind of taking the focus of the cemetery for the next year. So rather than budget an amount to hold over for that, we're looking to accomplish it another way. That's why that budget has decreased for this year and next year. Once that project's done, we would expect to put that back in there that keep going for cemetery improvements. Other questions? Moving on to zoo, they have their gate receipts, as well as some miscellaneous revenues for the zoo. They have the administrative. They have the administrative, they have their maintenance contracts broken out. The zoo also has supporting documentation which details most of their line items, if not all of their line items. And so any specific detail, they have your answers there. But their maintenance contracts breaks out the different cleaning and different things that they have there. Other than that, not a lot of change to the zoo administrative budget. The zoo maintenance budget, you'll see that they have their repaired buildings broken out. They're doing a couple of different projects around the zoo to fix up a few things, add some fences. And so that's where their amount are for '23 and '24. And then their new equipment other, they plan to purchase a mini compact excavator in 2023, which is $55,000 apart of their 68-250 listed. And in 2024, they're looking to purchase two Ventrex snow removal systems, which is $83,000, and they're kind of smaller, able to work on the sidewalks, be able to let their staff manipulate a lot of the areas that they really struggle and have to manually shovel right now. So it should cut down on labor time, safety and security on the zoo, as well as save everybody's backs a little bit. So they'll be very appreciative for that. And then if you look in 2024 for the zoo improvement, the 217-500 includes $200,000 for smart water practices, as well as $17,500 to renovate the goldfish pond. The smart water practices update has been a CIP project, and that was identified in the CIP plan to pull off for this year's budget. For zoo animal care, I'll point out that similar to the other IT accommodations, we broke out the veterinarian services from the zoo animal care budget. So some of these have dropped off, but they're incorporated in the next budget you'll look at. So you see the salaries drop and some of the other things. But for the repaired buildings, for the zoo animal care, their supporting documentation speaks to what those are. You'll see that the vet medical expense, $38,000 is gone, the $140 for animal feed is gone. Those are going to be in that zoo-vet division instead. And then their new equipment other and zoo building and grounds, they're looking at a couple of different items that would help to move them along, and I failed to note that down, so. They have a pickup they're looking to replace, as well as a generator for the south end operations. That makes up the bulk of the $136,400 for this year. And then the $20,000 and $40,000 for the zoo building grounds, there's a couple of different things they're going to do, but new timbers, new siding operations, working on some of the exhibits that they're going to be improving, and that's broken out in their supplemental information. For zoo animal health and nutrition, you'll see there's no history. It's just the brand-new '23 revised and '24 amounts. But the medical expense, this is for ongoing service, medications, anything related to the animal well-being. It's incorporated that, it's a hard number to budget, because depending on the animal care needs, if they're older, if they get sick, you know, that might go up, it might go down. The animal feed, you'll see, is pretty, the $150 is somewhat consistent with our historicals. '24, there's an extra meat order, based on the timing of when they need to order meat. Some years, they have an extra order to do, and so that's why you see that uptick in 2024. But there's a couple of different things on the radar for them coming forward, some of their providers for feed and things that may not be there in the future, where we get discounts or half off our costs that the city may lose going forward, that we'll have to absorb a little bit and kind of look at that cost probably increasing in the future. Any questions on zoo? All right. Moving on to recreation, you'll see an uptick in the collections vending. They have incorporated a few different vending machines throughout the city organization that the rec is maintaining, and so that expected revenue is going to go up. They also have increased their fitness revenues. They've seen an uptick in those numbers through the beginning of the year, and so we're expecting that to be an increase. Part of that's due to the new equipment they've been putting out there, it's making it more appealing at Core. So we're seeing a return on that investment in the attendance that's been going out there. On the opposite end, you'll see a decrease in some of the revenues for the Garden Rapids with us cutting back the hours in the schedule this year. We expect those admission revenues to drop off. We know that there'll be an associated staffing cost diminishing as well to coincide with that, but we do expect those revenues to decline for the events as well. The historicals would show that we weren't getting that $30,000 that we would expect, and so we've diminished that to be more on par with what we've seen over the last couple of years. Questions on revenues for the rec? Okay, moving into operations, you'll see a pretty big jump in the banking credit card charges from $27,500 up to $30,000. Historically, when the rec was operating on its own, all of the different departments had the charges coded to them specifically, but we're just taking it all from the admin or this operations budget. And so that $30,000 represents the fitness, the athletics, all of those credit card charge fees under one umbrella rather than split out. So we're upticking that there, but you'll see an associated decrease in every other division within the rec. Supplies concessions, again, is going up due to them running more concessions, having more venues that they're operating under, but there'll be an associated revenue with that increased cost. And then the new equipment other for 2023, they're looking to do new tile in the classrooms and entryways at the rec center. That's about $20,000. And then remodel the front desk for about $40,000. It's got some issues there that they've dealt with for quite a while, but it's time to redo that. And then for 2024, for the new equipment, they're looking at getting a truck for the concessions athletics, those that run around and deliver all those concessions and things like that. For aquatics, you'll see that they, it's pretty similar to the past. The contract services line, I'll just point out, this is for some ongoing maintenance service, apart from what we can do to maintain the slides, maintain some of the equipment to make sure that we keep it running in the top order and extend the life of that. So we contract some of that service out. Chemicals has increased, they've continuously increased cost in the chemicals. They've also been trying to bulk order and still kind of working out some of the kinks with the pool. So hopefully we get a really stable point on that cost going forward, but it's been continuing to kind of uptick year over year so far that we run the pool. And then I'll point out that $40,000 at the bottom for the aquatic facility. The intent is to cover any large capital-type purchases with that, and any amount held over will set aside into the Fund Five to hold for any, you know, slide replacement, things like that, big capital purchases down the road. For this year, they've identified that they need to replace an AC unit in the ticket area. It's just not keeping up, and it was very, very hot in there last year for all the staff. And so they're looking to get a new unit, and it's as well as replace one of the vacuums or possibly purchase a couple of vacuums for the pool, because they've had one that's just not keeping up. So make sure it stays clean. Recreation arts, no change, very simple budget, nothing to really mention there. Athletics, their supplies athletics has gone up. They've had, they're replacing a couple of scoreboards, like four scoreboards, and they're looking for a sponsor to cover part of that cost, but we've incorporated the cost of the $20,000 for those scoreboards in the budget, just in case the sponsor does not occur. And then they are looking to get new soccer goals, some youth soccer goals this year and adult soccer goals next year. So that's the remaining balance of the new equipment other for these two years. I'll also point out that the lease agreement for the Leitner Lights, next, the 2024 payment of approximately $53,000 is the final payment for that. So then we'll see that one come off the budget, and we won't pay that anymore. And then the lease agreement for the O'Braith Gymnastics, that goes until 2028, so we still have that for a little while still. For fitness, not a whole lot to point out, other than their lease agreement for Core Equipment has continued to increase. That's because they keep adding the new sets, new batches of workout equipment. The '23 is higher than '24, because we were delayed on a payment that should have gone in the end of '22. It was then paid in '23, so it was larger than it should have been. And so that's why these years are comparable in almost the same cost, is because there was an extra payment in '23 apart from what there should have been. And so it's equates to the adding a contract this year for 2024. So we'll continue to add those, and then they'll have a rotation of those leases that they'll continue to maintain. So once they get to that point where all those leases are active, that number will stay fairly steady going forward. Maybe some slight upticks as those costs increase, but by and large, it'll be pretty close to the relatively the same number. Questions on recreation? Okay. Almost at the end here. Streets, we've broken out, street and traffic, we're always incorporating the same division. We've broken those out, so now you have a street division and you have a traffic division. I'll point out here, the material street repair, $740,000 for '23 was quite an uptick from historical, but we were just seeing increased costs in oil and some of the asphalt material. So be able to do our chip seal and crack seal program, that increased. We're expecting, seeing that go down slightly, and so 2024, we're dropping it back a little bit, still higher than what historically was there. We shall make sure we can continue to do that maintenance program for the roads and not get behind on that. For the building purchase remodel, this is repayment for the Harvest Street purchase for the traffic division. This 2023 is payment two of eight, and 2024 is payment three of eight, so that goes for a few years more. And then those public transportation costs are our portion of the Fiddy County Transit costs, and the request letter from them is included as well in your supplemental documentation. Traffic, you'll see, is broken out for the first time. The historicals don't compare even close, because it's street and traffic together. But primarily, their costs are the salaries and benefits for their employees, as well as the maintenance traffic signals. This is to maintain and keep up the signs, traffic signals, things like that, that they go out and replace. And so that's what their major cost is. The rest, they do quite a bit on a pretty consolidated budget here. And then our last division is the capital improvement division. Some of the elements incorporated here is a Main Street program, the budget request from Downtown Vision for 2024 is $134,000. Their letter and budget is incorporated in that supplemental documentation as well. It's an uptick of about $12,000 over this current year, and they speak to kind of some of those costs increasing. The development incentives are some of the incentives we have for specifically the projects for Woodmont and Schulman. And then the economic development is the Fiddy County Economic Development amount, and their budget request for '24 is $305,000, which is the same as what they requested for 2023. Also new here is the land purchase. This was for the parcel of land we purchased earlier this year, so that $700,000 in the budget is for that portion paid from the general fund. And then miscellaneous, I'll just point out, includes the municipal band, as well as a few other miscellaneous costs, but that's where the band's request letter would be paid from. And then social funding is social funding for our community and arts grant. Those are staying the same for '24 as they are in 2023. So that is the completion of the general fund. I'll point out to the numbers at the bottom, you'll see that the total available is the cash balance plus the revenues anticipated for that year, and then the expenses, list out the full expenses. We have been carrying over, last year was $3.4 million, and the general fund we anticipated carrying forward from year to year. So that's the amount budgeted to carry forward into 2025 at this point, the end of 2024. And with everything incorporated, that leaves us a deficit of $2,2498 right now. Again, we're going to expect to get some clarification from the county as far as our evaluation, and then that's where we start having those discussions of where do we go from here? Now we know where our numbers lie, and we expect next week we should get that. We can start reviewing, okay, what do we need to do to get that number to that net zero? And so I'll shift gears, unless there's any questions at this time, I'll shift gears and go to my memo presented on the commission item today. It says, "The general fund budget presented today uses the assumption of a 3% property tax valuation increase in 2023. The total dollar value assessed in property taxes for the City Guard City for '23 was Assuming an increase of 3%, the city estimated dollar value of $9,696,262 for the 2024 budget. This is broken out with $1,396,203 allocated to the airport, $2,917,74 allocated to debt service, and $5,384,285 allocated to general fund." And again, that'll be clarified here pretty quickly. "The general fund as presented today has a shortfall of $2,2,498. The city expects to receive this estimated valuation from the county by June 15, 2023. This valuation will replace the assumption of 3% increase. Depending upon the estimate, the shortfall for the general fund may increase or decrease. At that time, staff will work to provide scenarios for the governing body to choose from, which will allow for a balanced budget, which may include adjusting projected revenues for the city or eliminating some expenses. Some of the items with large costs to which the city commission may consider making adjustments can be organized into three categories. Projects included in the geobond issuance, which might be removed and placed in the annual budget or removed altogether. Projects included in the budget which might be removed or placed in the geobond issuance. And projects not yet included in the budget which might be added. The projects are identified below in each respective category. For projects currently included in the draft geobond issuance, we have the Valley View Cemetery expansion at $1.5 million. Eastside Pedestrian Pathway, which the city's cost would be $2,155,000, and this leverages additional funding from the state, as well as the Kansas Avenue widening Sea Clip project, with the city cost being $1,430, leveraging additional funding from the state, which is approximately $5,080,000 for a geobond issuance for this year." And I'll just note that that estimate of $5 million geobond issuance is incorporated into what I presented as that debt service cost for 2024. Projects included in the draft 2024 budget include implementation of smart water practices at the zoo for $200,000, the mobile command unit for emergency services for $800,000 in general fund, and $250,000 in E911 funds leveraging additional federal funds, and a network refresh for IT infrastructure at $562,000. Projects not included in the draft geobond issuance or the draft 2024 budget include Buffalo Dunes golf course improvement at $200,000, additional cost for the airport terminal project at $250,000, downtown development incentive, which is undefined at this point, transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement plan fund, which we've talked about building that for these future capital projects, that amount is undefined at this point, as well as implementing a McGrath Pay Plan update based on recommendations that are currently ongoing, which is undefined and unincluded at this point. An option to consider to provide funding for the additional airport terminal project costs and the Buffalo Dunes golf course improvements would be revenues from the .15 city sales tax. At year-end 2022, the .15 sales tax fund had approximately $180,000 revenues above the 2022 debt service costs. The 2023 estimated .15 sales tax revenues are $1,350,000. Additionally, the estimated interest income in 2023 for the .15 sales tax fund is $200,000, for a total of 2023 estimated revenue of $1,550,000. The 2023 debt service costs are $968,912. Therefore, the estimated revenues above debt service costs at year-end 2023 are estimated to be $760,000. The 2024 debt service costs are $972,000, and the city would again expect to receive approximately $1,350 in .15 sales tax revenues. If sales tax collections remain the same, it is estimated that the city would be able to meet the debt service obligation each year and continue to have excess funds to go towards projects and property tax stabilization. The commission could choose to expense some of these excess funds for projects at this time, so long as the balance is maintained to cover the debt service. The risk to allocating these revenues towards other projects would be that a downturn in sales tax collections could leave a deficit coverage of the debt service, and the city would need to find other funding sources to comply with the debt service obligation." So alternatives at the time, there's no specific action item being requested this time. Staff requests preliminary feedback and direction from the commission for preparation of budget scenarios to be presented at a future meeting, and staff has no recommendation. Fiscal note, everything in this impacts the fiscal note, right? So really, the direction we would kind of, or discussion that would benefit us at this time of staff would be to evaluate some of these projects as far as, is there anything that catches your eye as maybe less important or more important to make sure gets in there? And then do you have any perspective on utilizing those .15 sales tax funds? The risk being the debt service is coming, and if whatever we drop off or we expense it now, we're not covered on that until all the full length of that term debt service is incorporated into that fund. We don't really have an excess, we have an estimated excess based off current year collections. So to gauge kind of what the commission's feelings are as far as the projects listed, as well as utilizing some of those funds would be the direction that we're looking for today.
Jared, this paragraph that I've got highlighted on the screen, you arrived at the total of 1.55 available, and then the costs are 970. This should be the delta between those two numbers, right?
The 1.55 is revenues this year plus the 180. That was available at the end of 2022.
Oh, that does get you $760,000. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I had to get out my pencil and calculator, try to figure out how that came about, because I was sitting there going, how did he come up with this? I had to kind of, I had a lot of math paperwork to figure that out.
And the debt service for that, the half of the interest is paid in May, or due in May, we paid it in April, and then the full balance of the principal and the other half of the interest is due in November. And so for 2024, that would be about $130,000 due in May, and then $840,000 due at the end of the year. So we have time to collect that, the majority of that, before it would be due in 2024.
So on the geobonds, are they going to be, since interest rates have changed so dramatically, is that also going to affect the cost of issuance of a geobond too?
It would. The debt service amount with that increased interest rate is the amount that is incorporated into the debt service fund that I presented earlier at the other meeting. And so I forget off the top of my head what that number was, but the 2024 interest and principal amounts presented incorporates that full with the added interest increase. And for us, we would expect, those interest rates are rising, but we don't expect that that would be quite the same shift of an interest rate as you see if you go out in the market. We're we're close to probably 3.5%, 4% would be what we expect.
So on these projects that, in a draft geobond, if these projects are not completed, do we do we lose the state funding, or is that cannot be carried over, or is it, or is there a limitation on how, when those have to be completed?
Mike might be able to speak a little bit better on that, but I know for the eastside pedestrian pathway, there's no obligation to do the project, but we would lose the funding. We would, they're obligating, I believe it's a million five, is that right? I think it's 1.5 million the state is contributing towards that. For the C-Clip, for Kansas Avenue, I believe it's a million. So that's their portion. We pay the balance, we pay the difference. So we could also diminish back the scope of the project to say, hey, we're not comfortable with all of this, we're going to do 2/3 of what we plan to do. We have some flexibility there, but if we don't do the project altogether, we would lose that state funding.
So they have to be done by the end of 2024 to to be able to leverage the state funds? Or is it, I mean, 2024?
And we've already pushed that project back once, right?
I know that.
Kansas Avenue.
And I would say both these projects, you've approved the engineering costs for both of them, we've begun that, and so this would, those are anticipated to be reimbursed from the geobond issuance. So we're we're already stepping a little way into that project. Granted, if we push it, we have that engineering isn't going to be lost, but those were identified kind of the end of last year as the potential projects for this year. The cemetery expansion is the one that we've added to the list, saying this this ought to be a geobond project for this year as well.
So if your estimates, so like, say nothing changes, and I know something will when you get all of those estimates. So the 2 million, what does that, in order to make up that $2 million overage, what would that mean in mill levy?
It would be about eight mills, give or take a little, but approximately eight mills.
So you're just asking us to, for a thumbs up or thumbs down on the projects, or on kind of the direction of getting the?
Similar to what I did last year. My intent would be to come back at a future meeting with an item that shows, here's what this budget incorporates, here's what's left out of this budget. You can make last minute shifts in or out, but here's the impact of the mill rate. Last year, our delta number was really the ARPA funds. It wasn't so much, do we have the money? It was, how much of this do you want to use to subsidize? We don't have that benefit this year. And so it's really a, do you want to cut this out to to not impact the mill levy, or do you want to leave it in and impact the mill levy? So if you can give some direction as far as whether you greatly lean towards the project, saying this absolutely has to be in there, this one maybe would be on the chopping block as a scenario B for you to consider. But my intent would be to, based off the feedback from you today, come back with some options and avenues to choose from that are scoped towards the feedback you're giving me today, if that makes sense.
Do you know what level of phasing we can do with IT infrastructure, or is this, it's going to have to be, Les here for a second.
Clay's in here. My understanding is it's an all or nothing. With our current infrastructure and the current contract, we can't break off chunks. We have to pay the full cost of it regardless. And so I think this version is a one time, and then in the future, we really could do that phasing. But it can be pushed back if we say, hey, we're going to limp it along and go a little longer. I think that's an option, but I don't believe you could, we can do a chunk.
So in talking about the projects on the geobond, can those be phased at all, or do they have to be all or nothing? Like you said, you could, you could choose to, like the Value View Cemetery, I mean, would there be a way to separate that into three rather than 1,500,000? Could you do 500,000 for the next three years? Does that make any difference on the actual?
I think for the the mobilization and the cost to do that, it would increase our costs to try to break it into sections. And I and I think the the urgency to this is that they're quickly running out of space. So this was, this has been kind of on the radar, and I think has been accelerated to, hey, there's, we can't really push this back any longer. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe Nolan's projection was even at the end of 2024, early 2025, we could be looking at a shortage of of having available spaces for people.
And that's one that we've pushed back.
We have continued, it's been on the on the radar. And I will say that the CIP committee is currently working towards projecting or presenting a future list of CIP, and we're planning to present kind of the top tier items as well as like a bullpen of items. Go get some, go get feedback from the community, get feedback from committee, and then bring that to you. But then you would be able to kind of dictate some of those. But when I indicate the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement plan fund, the idea would be that when we identify the top 10 items that we want to accomplish going forward, we develop a mechanism to say, okay, accomplish this $2 million item in 2027, we need to transfer this much amount for each year to get that into the pot. And that's what's kind of another missing piece here for the general fund that we're not, we're not building in yet. Otherwise, we just, we try to capture these and present them, just like Value View Cemetery throwing in a geobond, because we've done no preparation to pull the money and get it ready for a project of that that quantity. So ideally going forward, we build that plan a little bit more robustly as from a financial standpoint to accrue the funds available for the the project. But that would be a further burden to the general fund in those transfers that pulled us farther away from a balanced budget at this point.
Can you talk a little bit more about the McGrath Pay Plan update recommendations?
So if you remember, a few years ago, we had McGrath do a complete review of our pay plan. Ongoing right now, they're doing a review of our play plan. So there are some departments that have had some significant changes, such as the airport, they're completely drastically changed from what they were three years ago. So they're specifically looking at some departments, as well as just an overall review of our scale, and how is it comparing to market right now? We've seen a lot of different cities doing a lot of different things as far as cost of living adjustments and increased pay. And so this is a review to say, hey, how are we doing with that metric in the market? And there may be an impact where if we have fallen behind, they have a recommendation to adjust the scale, and we would then have a cost associated with kind of catching back up. We don't know what that looks like yet, but that's a potential.
So this is just for the information, and this doesn't take into account if they would make a recommendation that we'd be able to fulfill it?
So the the cost for them to review is pretty minimal. I believe it's 8,000, 10,000, if that's all right. So it's it's not a huge cost, so the HR department budget is going to pay for that review. The cost would be if they come back and say, hey, you've fallen way behind, that we recommend this. Again, the commission would have the option to do so or not do so, but if the recommendation is such, it could be a financial impact to to follow through with any recommendation they provide.
I know we've held steady the mill levy for so long, and I mean, I'm concerned about, I mean, eight mills is a huge increase, so obviously that's, I mean, that I wouldn't be for that, but I mean, until you get those actual figures, I mean, to me, I mean, this idea of what, considering what, if if there was a mill levy increase, I mean, if if you had to.
I would guess that our estimates are going to be close to the 3%. They might be slightly up or slightly down, but I don't think it's going to be an eight mill swing, one way or the other. So I think we're still going to be going back and trying to identify, do we cut out an expense, or do we increase the revenue? And we can go back, last year, we we went through and we identified by the time we started the budget versus when we were at kind of the endpoint, you have more data from the sales tax, you have more data from some of your revenues, you kind of know, are there other upticks? We also can go back and look at vacancies from the year. We budget primarily kind of what the full cost would be for every seat to be filled. We can go capture, so there's there's things we can do to go find some of the those dollars. And we'll do that before we come back and present the commission, and we'll itemize those out of, here's what we did to get to where we're at. But I don't think that will make up the full 2 million. And so that's where the the kind of feedback from today would be kind of some, at least a piece of this, what would be your your recommendation or feelings?
So the additional sales tax dollars that you're identifying that could be used for other projects, can it also be used to, because it's debt stabilization or mill levy stabilization? So that could be also used to decrease or to hold the mill levy stable, the mill levy stable rather than increasing that too?
It could be. In kind of roundabout way, it would be, if it if it covers the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Improvement or the additional airport terminal costs, it would be doing such, because otherwise that's going to hit the airport fund with an increased mill levy, or it's going to hit a transfer from the general fund to the golf course with an increased mill levy. So these projects are identified that would otherwise probably impact mill levy costs. So it's in essence doing that if we pursue those two. Those are two identified. The airport specifically was what that .15 was to cover the debt service for the airport. So additional funding for some of those miscellaneous costs that have come up, to kind of put some aside to say, okay, Rochelle can keep progress on the on the terminal project moving if we set aside this amount, is kind of what the intent there. And then Buffalo Dunes has been doing a lot of their improvements for very minimal cost every year, but Clay has been saying, hey, that's a big year coming, and this is the, next year is the big year. And so this cost to finish their project, to complete this highly effective, cost-saving project they've done, needs to be that that 200,000. So if we we did get a grant for a chunk to go towards this, but if we don't take it from here, likely we'll be looking somewhere else. That may come back and hit the mill levy regardless.
And those two projects, even though there's kind of a mapped answer for those, that doesn't buy down the 2 million deficit, because those aren't in the budget yet. If you assume those two things are in the, it's 2.45.
Correct. If you have no strong feelings, we can come back with, we can do our kind of analysis and present it either at the next meeting or the first meeting in July, which I believe is the sixth on the Thursday. We could at least say, hey, we've done what we can, here's the updated picture, and then still have this item, this list of projects, as well as some of the other kind of large tickers, one way or the other, that you can then kind of evaluate and make that, okay, we want to do this, but not this, and if you'd rather not, if you don't have any strong feelings, one way or the other, today.
I like that option.
Okay. I can do that.
It's it's hard, I mean, when you go through it and trying to remember and not really getting into that detail that you have, it's hard for me to say what would, you know, where you could cut and take and.
Yeah, how critical is a refresh this year versus next year? They say, well, if you don't do it this year, it's.
Right.
Would you know the amount of the undefined amount to like the downtown development incentive and things like that yet?
No.
I think those would be just kind of plug amounts.
Right.
For reference, I think you all have been throwing around like a half million dollar number on the.
CIP.
CIP.
I think any amount we plug will put towards the priority project. So we can make it work, we say, hey, we're willing to put, we can make this work in the budget, put aside a half a million or a quarter million. It'll at least start building that towards the next project. But that's a pain point, you, to to accomplish the plan as it, we've defined it, you've got to kind of deal with that pain upfront. Eventually, it pays dividends to have this accrual and then have an interest back to the city, and then it kind of builds. But it's a, it's a pain to get there. And so whatever amount we deem can be that transfer, we would, we would adjust the CIP to accomplish as much good as possible with it.
So on the Kansas Avenue widening project, so was it for safety reasons, or is it for just space reasons? Or, I mean, I'm curious, I can't remember, it's been so long since that's project's been pushed and pushed and.
I mean, it's traffic engineering, so I would imagine at some point in time, a traffic engineer is saying it's always safety. But specifically, it it widens the.
From which?
From the area in between the two expand. It's the area in between the two expansions, Michael give the street names, that's not yet, that's not yet been widened.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct. Just widening that last little bit out, there's drainage improvements, curb gutter replacements from site distance issues along that last section. And I was identified by KOD several years ago. This is the last phase of it.
And I believe our cost has pretty much doubled what we expected as of two years ago. We did estimates to now, so it's it's quite an uptick. But I think the longer we wait, the higher it's going to go.
The, the, did you have a follow up to that?
No.
As for the downtown development incentive, when the commission did the previous three rounds of that, I believe it was 250,000 each time.
It was.
It may have been 350, but I'm thinking 250.
I thought it was 250, could have been 350.
But it was an, I mean, not arbitrary, but it was, that could, that could be 200, that could be 150, that could be whatever number, kind of like the transfer Jared was talking about.
We will make.
The more you do, the more you can knock out, once you, or you accumulate more faster, the less you do, it takes a little longer to grow a, grow a pile of money.
If we get the the results back from the county, we can shoot for the next meeting, potentially having an update with maybe a little bit more guided direction. But if not, for sure, by the July, the first meeting in July, we can have a little bit clearer picture for you with maybe a little more scoped decision-making request of the commission at that point.
I think that'll be helpful.
I think if we go on the fourth, we also have another year, another month of sales tax receipts, a little more confidence.
Potentially.
One seventh more confidence than we have right now.
And we do, if you look back at the very beginning to the calendar, we do have our timeline here. The the first meeting in July, we also need to indicate our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate to the county. We ideally have a pretty clear picture at that point of what that that rate will be. You can, it can change from the time you present that, and it goes out and is published and sent to citizens and when you held your your public meeting. But historically, we've been, we've tried to be very close, we've tried to present that picture. So it may be if we go, we don't, or if we're not able to present in June again, and we hit that July meeting, we would probably need to make the decision pretty final of this is where we want to hit on the mill levy, so that we can present, present that to the county and be pretty close to to final, just as kind of on your radar.
And there's no statutory measurement by which how much you could miss that number after you've declared you're going to, you put a number in. But I think politically, you wouldn't want that to be dramatically different without some compelling external reason that you never saw coming. So, yeah, I think the, I think the idea is.
Be pretty, pretty wrapped up.
Be pretty wrapped up in early July.
All right, any other questions for me? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12D is the consent agenda. If approved, it would be, approved, it would be, the appropriate motion would be to approve D1 through seven.
It moved to approve consent agenda items D1 through seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioner Dick.
Had a really good morning touring around Garden City with some students with the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine, learning about rural living and specifically Garden City. It was good to go talk to them, and we had lunch with them to just talk about Garden City and then learn about it. And so that was, that was really good, and some really good comments about our community. That was good. Congratulations to Mike on your award. You know the importance of the award by how far away you have to go to get it. For us, that's almost as far away as you can get, so good job there. Remember, like Fred said, that water controller rebate is available. Really consider that if you are looking at putting in a new water controller, look at that program, because it will make, it's cheaper to buy a smart one than it is a conventional one. So if you are in the market for that, and actually, even if you aren't in the market for it, it's probably a good time to do it, especially like you said, on a year like this, where you're actually going to take advantage of it, shutting off itself when it rains, that's nice. Last year, it, like Fred said, it just kind of ran all year because you just had to use it all year. And then also, some good stuff coming up this this week and this weekend, Beefy Empire Days is going on, so just keep that in mind, and you have the parade this weekend, and then also the Renaissance Festival is this weekend down in Fennel Park, down by the zoo.
Commissioner Andrew.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I really enjoyed meeting the students. They had tons of energy and really excellent questions. I wish we could have met them all, but I know their time, I mean, I know that they're getting, they just came in last night, they said, and they're going to be, have lots of opportunities to do things here in Garden City, and we're just glad that they're here. Congratulations to Mike. I'm glad they're doing something locally, since none of us get to travel and see all of the accolades and the big, so we're excited for you. And, you know, Mike, we know that you are a huge asset to not only the industry, but coming from here, it really makes, it really makes us proud, and we're glad other people know how valuable you are. I love all the things that are going on. The rain has been incredible. I mean, it's it's interesting, because the smart, the smart controllers, how many people were still watering when it was raining, which was awesome to have the rain. And so, yeah, those smart controllers, when they actually could have worked, would be really nice, because I saw some people had standing water in their yards. You know, and New School's out, I know there's a, which I love, the the city at this time of the year, be careful, there's a lot of young people out on bikes and people walking, and just be very, be very kind and very compassionate and very, give a lot of grace. I know that a lot of people are out and about in the evening times, but you know, there can kids dart from between cars, and so, you know, the neighborhoods I love, I I try not to drive really fast, especially when I see kids, because you never know what's going to happen, but this is a great time of the year. We've had the longest spring that I can ever remember, so it has been really wonderful. And I know a lot of people are really enjoying being outside. I was at the zoo, and it was absolutely packed all over the place. I know that a lot of people don't realize, but if you're going, if you want one of the shelters, that you do have to reserve those. I know some people, oftentimes you can think and come up and just get one of those, but really, there is a really great place. Go ahead and reserve those, because there's been some really neat family gatherings. I've seen almost every single thing happen at one of those shelters. So if you're interested in those, just want to encourage you to plan early so you can get one of those shelters. That's all I have.
Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, kind of piggybacking on the comments of the other commissioners on lunch today with the students that are visiting our community, just had a few of the students, because we broke out, but very interested in the community and very interesting to get their input on Garden City. You know, you have people that come from outside, and they're, our group was really excited and really liked the community that they saw so far. So great to see that, and hopefully, we could maybe get a physician or two out of that to come back to Garden City and work here in the community. Attended the Memorial Day services at Valley View Cemetery during Memorial Day. Just want to congratulate the staff for all the hard work that they did in getting the cemetery prepared for that great weekend. It was a great ceremony, and the cemetery looked really good. Other than that, that's all I really have. Congratulate Mike on his award, good job, keep up the good work.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, ditto to what all the other commissioners said. So congratulations, Mike, K Tom, I had Matt McKenzie and Tanya at my table. I think we'll get a couple of those back in Garden City, because it sounded hopeful for them, the way they talked about coming to Garden City and being, wanting to be medical physicians in Kansas. So, yeah, good luck for them, and good luck to all of the other students that are through that, going through that program, as well as students. I know School's out, the summer school is in, so the next couple, this week and the next week is summer school. So congratulate, or not congratulations, but be with those teachers as they go through that process, and then with the students as well. I know they're just, they're doing an awesome job trying to keep those kids in school and continuing on for that cycle. But thanks for all the work that the city does also with public works, cemetery, parks, rec, golf, whatever else, IT. Thank you for all of that hard work, and to Jared for the budget, putting that together for us too. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, you're going to need to reinforce the shelves that you keep all your awards on, you know, on the wall and everything, so we'll have to work on that. There's no money in the budget for it, though.
Trophy room.
Yes, trophy room. It was an enjoyable lunch with the students. They have a really interesting schedule this week in addition to meeting with city commissioners and meeting with, you know, some of the other entities. They'll be doing some volunteer work on Thursday with the food distribution. And so I thought it was really interesting how, when they put the schedule together, really trying to integrate the students into our community and getting to learn as much as they can. We had, well, we had two at our table, and one said she'd be interested in coming back, so that's a 50%, you know, that we've got going at our table. But no, it was really nice, and I think I look forward to more classes coming and, you know, just showing the world and showing, you know, all of those students just what a great thing it is to live out here in Garden City. Had a chance to go do the Economic Development's fifth Tuesday meeting last week to hear an update on housing and childcare, and it's always nice to just kind of see the numbers and see what we have going, and just hearing about the progress that's being made, because a lot of times you just don't see that progress. And to be able to hear that and then be able to explain to people when they ask questions was really informative. I also, I wanted to remind people, you were talking about pedestrians and those, make sure you, when you cross those lighted pedestrian crosses, that you push the button and wait. The other day, I was driving, and somebody pushed the button and then just went, and there were cars coming on both sides, and I thought I was gonna, I mean, that's not good for my heart. And so just make sure that if you push that button to look, and there's that false sense of security, so just make sure that you look before you cross. And I think that's all I have.